City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded November 21, 2022.
At seven o'clock, we will call the regular meeting of the Stevens Point City Council to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Christensen.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Keemer.
Here.
Zerozua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Placence.
David, you have to unmute yourself.
Here.
There you go.
Niebone.
Here.
Shuda.
Here.
Dalton is excused. Fischler.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
And that is a quorum. For the benefit of our newest alderperson, David Placence, I will go over the traditional rules of Zoom participation. We ask that you stay on mute until you are called upon to speak. If you have something to say, raise your hand, or if you take yourself off of mute, I'll see that and we'll get to you. But until that time, for the -- to minimize the background chatter, we ask that you stay on mute. Okay, David? They muted, see? Now we know, right? If you would join me in standing and saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A couple of things. First of all, I want to recognize Tim Krutz. Tim was a park's employee, and he's going to be retiring. His last day is Wednesday. Thirty-five years as a full-time city employee, and if you count his part-time work, he's up to 40. So we wish Tim the very best in wherever life takes him. And if you see him between now and Wednesday, congratulate him on his retirement. If it's after Wednesday, I guess you can still congratulate him.
Ask how it's going.
Right. Every day is Saturday, and I don't work today. I don't have to work tomorrow either.
He was actually head of the grounds crew during the American Legion World Series in 1987.
Really? Nice.
Wow.
Well, that's amazing. So yes, I know that Tim has probably left his mark on a lot of city projects and around the community, and I doubt it will end with a retirement. We'll just stop paying him for it. We'll get him on a volunteer committee pretty quick. Thanksgiving week. You know, it's this time of the year where everybody's like, okay, you know, think about what you're thankful for and be thankful for the things that you have. But I got to tell you, the world makes it hard sometimes. Today, my friend Mayor Sean Riley of Waukesha is at a memorial service for the tragic parade incident that happened one year ago today. And then you read the headlines this morning, and you find out about a shooting in Colorado Springs at Club Q. It makes me wonder what goes through some people's heads. We disagree. That's human nature. We don't have to agree with everything. You don't have to believe everything I do. I don't have to believe everything you do. I don't have to like the things you do. You don't have to like the things I do. But we're all still human. And when that level of divisiveness puts a thought in someone's head that I want to kill somebody, and you act on that, what does that make you? Because I certainly don't think it's a human being. We have spoken out against hatred and bigotry, and I still see name-calling from people that have done the same, you know, spoken out against that bigotry and hatred and bias. And they're still doing the name-calling, too. What is it about human nature that brings us to such a level where we can't just let you live your life, I live mine, stay in your lane, whatever you want to call it? Why do we have to inject ourselves in someone else's life? Why do we have to force someone to believe or try to force someone to believe what we believe? To me, that's absolutely disgusting. And as we move into Thanksgiving, yes, absolutely, be thankful for the things you have. But over the next month or so, our holiday season, let's try and put ourselves in someone else's shoes. Because everybody's got a story. Everybody in this room got here through a journey that most of us know nothing about. Everyone you meet on the street, the homeless person sleeping on the bench, something brought them to that level, and you have no idea what that was. So let's try and show a little compassion. And while we do that, pray for the people that have lost their lives because others couldn't hit that compassion level. Item number three is persons who wish to address their mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing should register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by the mayor. We have two public hearings. McKenna, did anybody sign up to speak? If you want to speak on any agenda item and you haven't signed up, McKenna has the slips. Thank you. Nobody else? All right, then we will move along. Persons who wish to address the mayor and council on an agenda, non-agenda item for up to three minutes, can do so now. We have nobody that signed up for that.
Mayor.
Is that a current comment from Keely?
No. Nope, that was, sorry, 6:59.
Okay.
Before I turned it on. All right, thank you, though, for bringing that to my attention. All right, we did have a presentation scheduled tonight, but I was in contact with Chiamaka earlier today, and they're going to postpone it until December. They're preparing for Thanksgiving break, so, like, take those priorities, right? So December, we should have a brief presentation from Chiamaka. Item number six is the consent agenda. Are there any alders that wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, then I would accept the motion.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Niebone, seconded by Johnson. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Let's see here now. We've got a three-page agenda tonight. That's kind of a new one. All right. Item number seven is on page 51 of your packet, and that is the City of Stevens Point participation in an agreement with Portage County for the express vote system. This is something brought forward by the clerk, and that information memo outlining it was included in your packet. Are there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second it.
We'll give the second tomorrow. Discussion?
I just have a quick question. We do have paper backup. It's a touchscreen, right?
So we actually have a demo model right there if anybody wants to play with it.
But as long as there's some kind of a printed backup that can be audited at a later date if need be.
Do either of the clerks want to speak to that?
I think, did I read it prints a receipt or something that then gets?
Yeah, I saw the paper ballot.
So this is what the typical optical--
I got to have you stand by the lectern. That's the only way that the microphone picks it up.
Yeah, sounds good. So this is what your typical optical scan ballot looks like with the express vote machines. It's this ballot. So there still is a paper record. It's not an electronic, per se, voting machine, which then is tabulated, and you have no record. This is your record from that machine to your tabulator, which is in the clerk world called a DS 200.
Yeah, that was my understanding. Thank you for--
You're welcome.
Just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
All righty, so we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Is there any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So that would take, so that would replace the voting machines that we have now.
So the tabulator, the only voting machine that you have in your polling location right now is called an AutoMark, and that was bought back in 2005. So you can imagine it's pretty outdated. So this is considered a universal voting machine, and we're actually looking to implement this full countywide. So moving forward, starting in 2024, this would be the only way to vote is through the express vote machine. So it would be replacing that AutoMark, but the tabulator that's still in place at every polling location will still be there.
Okay, so like, I know they often just go to the courthouse and vote. Would that change? We would still get a, we would still get the same ballot, then we'd still just hand that over? You just hand that to the clerk's office?
The hope is actually, if you do the in-person absentee voting, the hope is to use these machines. It'll print off that ballot that she had shown you. Then you'll place that in the envelope.
Okay.
And the tabulator itself, so for mail-in absentees, we'll still be using the old optical scan, but for in-person and Election Day, we would be using this. And so the tabulator will read both of those ballot styles.
Absolutely. Let's go with Johnson and then Zerozua.
Thank you, Clerk Davis. I'm wondering if these screens probably will be more user-friendly for people with sight disabilities and maybe even touch disabilities?
Yes, you're totally correct in that. So what I can actually show you, just a couple of things, if you don't mind?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Sure. I won't be able to do both, but I'll try my best. So one of the big benefits, as far as wanting to move to these machines in general, is this ballot can be carried over from election to election. So right now, prior to an election, my office has the fun joy in trying to guess how many ballots to get printed. So one of the issues that we're facing in elections right now nationwide is paper shortages. So one of the driving factors of switching to this is that you can see it's blank. So these records right here can be carried over from election to election versus right now, when we print up ballots, they just essentially get shredded after a certain timeframe of an election. So, but to address your question, so after you insert your ballot, and it's considered a live ballot because it has initials of two election inspectors, if you get into here, there's several components to this that make it an ADA-compliant machine. One of them being that anybody who is blind, there's a Braille handheld device that they can use so they can make their selections. And then they also have an outlet for plugging in headphones. So as they're going and going through the candidates, they can hear which candidates are being selected, which is a really nice feature. The other thing is the contrast. So for those who are visually impaired, you can either go to white or to a black screen. And then the other thing that's really great about this is being universal. We can get this program to be, and I believe it's up to eight languages. So as we get a more diverse population and those who can't read our typical printed ballots can go up to this machine and select which language they would like to cast their ballot on. So when I say it's universal, it's definitely universal.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My question is about curbside voters.
Yes.
How would they be voting, casting their?
So on Election Day by state statute, we still have to have a certain number of these available. So it is going to be the direction from our office that we do not make these visibly available. Instead, we want them to use the other-style ballot. But these will still be available for those who need to vote curbside.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, when Clerk Yentor was explaining this to me, it's really impressive. Leaps and bounds above what we're using now, so.
Yep, and the county in general is doing just shy of $900,000 of investment into this election equipment. So we're very excited for it.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
So is most of this being funded through the federal government grants they've had to update people to try to like, update elections and so on?
Sure, so we're actually, this was approved with our budget adoption. So I made this proposal back a couple of months ago with CIP, so for our capital improvement funds. And then with the budget adoption, that approves all of those projects that are allocated in that. I actually did make an application for ARPA, too, just for the county's, you know, process and how they're handling that. So that will be up for selection at the end of this month on November 28. But that's how it's getting funded, is either through county money or through the federal money through ARPA.
And there will be a slight increase to the city budget for the, was it licensing or maintenance?
For more licensing.
Licensing.
Yeah.
Okay. But it's relatively insignificant as far as everything else goes. Alder Christensen.
Just a quick question. Early, are absentee ballots will still be paper?
Everything will still be paper. Nothing is going electronic. It's just basically an electronic voting machine. So in-person, we'll stick with the new ballot style, in-person absentee and then on Election Day, and then mail-in absentee, as long as that's still available by our legislature. That's what it'll be is on this optical scan ballot.
Got you. President Johnson?
Thank you. Just a follow-up. I was a helper at the polls one year, and there was a gentleman with Parkinson. He couldn't hold a pen any longer, but he'd be able to do this.
Yeah, this addresses a lot of issues that people have, and that's why they consider it the universal voting machine because it can address and help anybody. Overall, as far as like, a voter experience, it's a much nicer platform to use because when people get to this ballot, they just get confused. They get anxious. And so when they're at this kind of screen, they're focusing on one race at a time so they can take that time and make their accurate selections. And overall, it does decrease the voter time, too. So I think it will help people in general.
Thanks for building that into the county budget.
Yeah, happy to.
Okay.
Okay.
All good? All right, we have a motion to approve, and it's been seconded. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Okay, and that is approved. Alder Fischler, could I just have you say hello, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we had a speaker issue. It was coming out the PC rather than the ceiling, and I fixed it, and you tested it for me. So thank you. Item number 61, and the subsequent items after that, I'm sorry, item number eight on page 61, nine, 10, and 11 are all kind of related to the same thing. There was a memo from Director Kramer explaining most of this. First one is dedication of the parcel listed in your packet, which is about 2.65 acres to a city park.
Motion to approve, please.
Motion by Johnson, seconded by Niebone. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number nine is the naming of the aforementioned parcel to Peters Family Park in honor of the Peters family and their major donation pledge for the Plover River Crossing Project in accordance with the city's naming rights policy, item number six, sub C, sub one.
Move to approve.
Moved by Niebone.
Second.
We'll give the second to Shuda. Discussion?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you to Director Kramer for including bios for the people that we're naming parks after so that we know who we're, the people that we're choosing to name our city amenities after.
Okay. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 10 is the naming of the future bridge spanning the Plover River, Henigan Bridge, in honor of the Henigan family for their major donation pledge for the Plover River Crossing Project, consistent with the city's naming rights policy, as I mentioned before.
I'll also move to approve.
Moved by Niebone. Seconded by Johnson. Discussion? What do we do in the city? We build bridges. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 11 is the naming of the future boardwalk, Century Boardwalk, in honor of Century Insurance for their major donation pledge for the Plover River Crossing Project, consistent with the city's naming rights policy.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Niebone, seconded by Keemer. Discussion? Hearing and seeing none. One more roll call, please.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 12 is on page 72. That is approving the state municipal agreement for an infrastructure transportation alternatives program project for the Plover River Crossing. That's our TAP grant for the Plover River Crossing.
Move to approve.
Motion by Niebone.
Second.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion? Okay, I just want to thank everybody who played a role in this. This is going to be a tremendous project. We have Steve Menzel online with us, and Tori Jennings was another of the key people that put this grant together. And it's a huge project for the entire community. So I thank them both and everyone else that was involved whose name I didn't mention. Clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 13 is a resolution, a request from Jim Anderson, representing Anderson Development Company, LLC, for a final subdivision plat review of a proposed 39-lot subdivision on the property located at 5498 Gala Road and an unaddressed parcel bounded by Gala Road and Regent Street and the property located at 324 Berluschi Road. As you know, we've been talking about this one for a few months now, and this would be the final resolution for the plat.
I move of approval.
Motion by Morrow. Seconded by Niebone. Discussion?
I think this is a great thing to improve the housing stock that we have. Because I think we lose a lot of people to surrounding areas in Plover because people cannot build their own homes, and so they just keep on moving further and further away from the city. And it's another option for us to be able to keep more folks in Stevens Point.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please call that roll?
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 14 is on page 86 of your packet, and that is a resolution, a request from the City of Stevens Point for the acceptance of dedicated land for right-of-way purposes extending Elizabeth Avenue approximately 237 feet to the south.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Niebone, seconded by Christiansen. Discussion there. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 15 is a resolution, a request from Wayne Bushman, representing Sunrise Point Ventures LLC, for a conditional use permit to construct multiple business incubator structures on the property located at 5001 Jerns Drive. President Johnson moves?
Yes.
Second.
Seconded by Shuda. Discussion. Hearing none. Another roll call, please.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 16, on page 90 of your packet, is an ordinance, another request from the City of Stevens Point to annex a property located at 5950 US Highway 10 East, an unaddressed parcel bounded by US Highway 10 East and Badger Avenue, an unaddressed parcel off of Badger Avenue, and two landlocked parcels directly north of the property located at 5950 Highway 10 East. Those parcel numbers are identified in your packet, and they are consistent with Wisconsin statute 66.0223.
Move to approve.
Moved by Keimer, seconded by Niebone. How's that?
That's good.
Fair enough, all right. Discussion. Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 17 is to approve the occupancy license for 1101 First Street regarding an existing encroachment into the First Street right-of-way.
Move approval.
Thank you, seconded by Christiansen. Discussion. Hang on one second. Ron?
Ron?
We're going to be talking about the budget here in just a minute. Nobody? Okay. Go ahead, President Johnson.
Speaker.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. So I guess I'm kind of curious how, the building's been there a long time. So kind of the history on that would be great, so that everyone is aware. And then this property owner did nothing wrong. It was just a matter of, that didn't get done right.
When they redid that intersection and they built it, it's just, it's got a weird ride. You want to tell us a little bit about the history? It was mid-'90s, something like that?
Yeah, I believe it was 1994, the building was constructed. And essentially, it encroaches onto the First Street right-of-way, anywhere from six inches to a foot. It just kind of varies. You know, thankfully, surveying work has gotten much better, and the technology relating to surveying is much more advanced than it was even in the mid-'90s. It's really nothing that, you know, this, this type of situation exists pretty much up and down Main Street, where you have buildings that are encroaching onto Main Streets, just road widths change throughout time, or buildings were built close enough to the road right-of-way where you just, you have some inconsistencies. And so essentially, this is just a way for the, the current property owner to be able to get essentially title insurance for anyone who would want to purchase the property. There are some title insurance companies that will not underwrite this because it's a known encroachment problem. So the cities agree to work with the current property owner to get this resolved and hopefully sell the property.
May I have a follow-up?
Absolutely.
So is, because I see that if the building were to, you know, catch on fire and be burned to the ground, then this agreement would be null and void, which kind of then creates a diminution of value to the property? I guess I'm just trying to figure out how that all fits, if they ever want to rebuild or sell the property. And I guess I'm sensitive to diminution, because I run landfills and everybody's worried about that. So I'm just trying to figure out how this fits into the future for the property owner, because of some of the switching around of roads that the city may have done. I just want to make sure that the property owner is made whole.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good point. Essentially, it serves, I kind of view it as a grandfathered status, almost, wherein if you have a house that's built too close to the side lot line, and it burns down, or something occurs, we typically, that home would lose its grandfathered status, and we would make them build the home consistent with today's zoning code. This is really no different. This, this has been something that's been agreed to by the property owner and by city staff. And so we have a lot of these license agreements kind of throughout the city, but I don't think there's a concern from at least city staff on the concern of the property value being diminished because of the, essentially forcing them to build the, rebuild the property on their own property. If that makes sense, rebuild the building on their own property.
Right. No, I understand. And that makes sense. Thank you very much. It's just that their property right now includes this licensing agreement. Should the, you know, tornado come through and knock it over, then the land itself becomes much less on which they can build. Is that correct?
The lot itself stays the same size. They just have to shift the building about six inches to a foot, further east.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for the director? I have one. Ryan, I can see your background, and I see the stairwell and the fireplace. Are you in the Brady Bunch house?
Marsha, Marsha, Marsha.
Marsha, Marsha. All right, we have a motion in a second. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow. Fishler.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Director Kocanowski, Alderperson, Niebone and I decided we're going to get you one of those large white horse statues to put on that cabinet behind you.
He's going to have a fuzzed-out background next to him.
Item number 18 is on page 103 of your packet, and that is to approve the ordinance amendments in chapter 9.05, as they relate again to parking.
So moved.
Motion by Morrow.
I'll second.
Seconded by Keimer. Discussion.
We have talked and talked and talked.
You know, you're going to see these probably for several more months yet. We just, every time we, we turn over a stone in chapter nine, we find another stone that's like, how did that get there? So we're, eventually, we're just going to rewrite the whole thing. So just through these amendments. Anyway, if you're in favor, vote yes. Oppose, no. And the clerk will call that roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 10, I'm sorry. Item number 19 is our first public hearing of the evening, and that's for the installation of Storm Sewer Laterals, Project 21 dash 01. Alex, have you signed up for that? But it's a public hearing, so you don't really need to sign up. I'll just declare the public hearing open now, and we'll have you come to the lectern and give your testimony.
Good evening, Board. Mayor Huesa. Alex Kokonowski, 760 Franklin Street. Received in the mail about this public hearing for sewer lateral installation, storm, excuse me, installation of storm sewer laterals, and a number, it looks like, of 14 individuals in my neighborhood that are being billed with these laterals. First of all, I thought that this construction that took place in 2021 during the summer months were a government grant, and I was not aware that there was going to be any additional cost put to any of the citizens of Stevens Point for that construction work that took place. Secondly, if we are ultimately billed with the laterals, considering an analogy similar to, I don't have any trees on my property, you have trees on your property, the leaves blow onto my property, I'll rake them up. The water falls all along the street, ends up in these corner sewage drains, and then go through the sewer lateral.
Well, they're storm drains. That's different than the sewers.
Well, it's, anything that sewer-related, it's still, I'm getting billed for everyone down the street. Am I correct? Between the...
No, not exactly, Alex. But here's, if the council will permit me, we'll take some liberties. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in the public hearing section of this item?
And maybe the director.
Maybe. He's kind of going through what I was going to ask.
Okay, how about if we do this? I'm going to ask the director to come up first, and we will suspend the public hearing at this point. I'll ask the director to come up and explain it, because I think that's going to, may answer a lot of, at least Alex's questions. I'm not sure what yours are, but if they don't, then we'll go back to the public hearing. And if there are any questions that come in through the public hearing, after we close the public hearing, I'll have the director come back up and answer those. All right?
Thank you.
All right, so we'll suspend the public hearing, and bring the director up here.
So, just kind of a brief overview of the whole process. The first time that these get discussed in our, at what we do for a public informational meeting ahead of a project, I don't know if you guys are at the same property when this started?
No, we're not.
New? Okay. So we, Engineering Office sends out letters to everybody in the neighborhood who should be affected, saying we're going to have a public informational meeting. That's really the first place where we get to talk about what's going to happen in the project. Often on projects, we plan on, because the very next step is the preliminary resolution.
Let me stop you right there. Alder Fishler, can you hear Joel?
Alder Fishler, can you hear me?
Oh, we cannot hear Joel on through.
Oh.
All right, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Is there something wrong with them?
Speaker. Microphone. Joel, say something.
How about now?
Good?
Okay.
Thumbs up.
Okay.
All of these things, the Brady Bunch theme song, we're fine.
I don't know who is messing with these. I kind of get people to stop messing with the settings on this.
Got to bring a DJ here.
Sorry, I apologize.
Okay, so, so the public informational meeting is kind of where we have it all out on plans, and we show here's our, here's our intent. We then have the committee and council action on the preliminary resolution, which is generally where we'll say, we expect that there could be assessments on this. And a lot of times, we overshoot that, because you can't go back and do more. So if I say on your property, we're going to assess you for a storm lateral, a sanitary lateral, a water lateral, 300 feet of sidewalk, the curb and gutter, everything else, you have to say it all upfront, because you can't go back and try to ring that bell again, which is why the preliminary resolution should have had a number higher than what you see in the final resolution. I'm pretty sure that's the way it worked this time, because we also can't assess more than what we say we're going to in the preliminary. So preliminary resolution would have probably been in middle of the year, second quarter of the year 2021. And because this is unusual, but we, we had this project roll over a season, because the whole project didn't get done. Now, fast forward to what we're actually assessing, just stormwater laterals, and we take the cost of all of them, and we divide it by the quantity of them, so you pay the same as you and everybody up and down the street. So we needed to do it now, because now we know what all the project costs are. We couldn't do it last year, when we'd prefer to do it, because not all of them were in. So we couldn't average out the costs accurately and make sure it was all equitable. So then you get your letters, says what your assessment is, and the other 14, or whatever it was. And it was just storm laterals. I believe we are, final resolution, I believe, is in under the preliminary resolution. I don't know, was there anything else?
I don't know.
Oh, oh, to get to the point. So what these are for, really, to, to cut down to the bone here, is that it's a storm sewer lateral to each property. This side of town, we have a lot of properties that are actually discharging stormwater. So from a sump pump or some other, you know, I don't know, a couple of roof drain type things, but mostly sump pumps, somewhere that it creates a problem. And by ordinance, we're supposed to be correcting those. But we come into a real situation where I might come up to your property and say, hey, we just discovered you're discharging into the sanitary sewer, and that's prohibited. It's against ordinance. And then I tell you to fix it, and there's no way to fix it, because you don't have a stormwater lateral. And maybe the yard's too small to discharge it out the back and expect that it's going to percolate in. And then winter rolls around, and it won't go anywhere anyway. So you get a pond in your backyard that eventually flows out your driveway, goes over the sidewalk, makes that icy, and we say this is a public hazard, right? So that's what you're paying for, is that pipe from the storm sewer to your property, so that if there are current issues, we can say that water's going to end up in that pipe, or for future issues. Because remember, we're building, these things, this infrastructure has to last for 100 years, right? And certainly, there is some of the housing stock in any part of town that's going to be rebuilt between now and when our utilities are. So say the next house that's built on some parcel out there in this group has an issue in the future that you might not right now. We're building ahead for those 100 years. And some places, as you may know, actually don't have much of a basement, because of the challenging situation with rock, water. So the next person may actually put in a basement and discover they need to de-water it. So then there needs to be a place for it to go. And it's a lot cheaper now than, like, if you put that in next year, the excavation, the patch and everything, you're probably looking at $3,500 minimum to start from scratch and do it, versus here's the cost of the pipe, because we're already restoring all this, that kind of thing. So that's where we're at.
And I think that speaks to Mr. Kokonowski's concern about paying for everybody else on that line. You're not.
No.
You're only paying for the pipe that goes from your property to the pipe that services everyone.
And it's stubbed out to the right-of-way.
Alex, I gotta, I gotta have you come up to the microphone, because nobody online can hear you then. We'll, we'll tag team it.
So an assessor did come down and look at the property and told me about the sump pump that went into the, the water drain, and that has been corrected. So I don't see why I'm still being billed for this, why it was even installed at this point then. And also, again, wasn't this a part of a government grant? Not at all?
No, there was no grant involved at all.
Okay, so are we going to be assessed more in our taxes for all this work done to the middle of the street, sidewalks?
Nope. Uh, no, the sidewalk should have been covered under the project, right? Yeah. Yeah, so there shouldn't be an assessment for sidewalks, and the rest of that stuff was covered by the utility.
Okay.
Which is covered under your water bill.
When the construction was going on, the, I forget the individual's name who was running it in our area, he said that this is a government grant that the city obtained.
Yeah, I don't know who you talked to, but that's not true.
We had some planning stuff.
Okay.
Joel, I get it.
Sorry.
I know, it's, well, that's, that's, you know, it zooms, makes it convenient for most people, but this is an inconvenience.
I guess what it comes down to is that there wasn't any part of the construction that was paid for through any grant dollars. Several years back, during one of our planning documents, we had some grant dollars. Those are available for stormwater planning. It was probably Jason, our inspector out there.
Really, so?
Yeah. So if there's anything about what's actually going on out there that you want straightened up, let me know, let him know. We'll, we'll get that all, like, as far as what's going on out there. Because I don't know how it could have been resolved prior to that pipe. But even so, if it was being resolved, if it's, if something's being taken place of, it's, say the water's going out the back, or there's a gravel pit or something like that, there's a lot of that. There's still a different solution here. So that pipe is still stubbed up to the property line, capped off, ready to be used without a ton of road construction taking place. It's right there behind the sidewalk.
All right, so Joel, have, just sit up front.
Okay.
We're going to reopen the public hearing. So Alex, if you want to come back to the lectern, if you have anything else you want to say, you're good. Okay, public hearing is still open. So you step up to the lectern.
Good evening. I'm Joshua Kloschuk. I live on 801 First Street. Sorry, I just moved in last year. Still getting used to it. So you, so this is not for the water or sewage on the house, correct? It's just for the storm, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. That was my main question. My other question is, I live right on the corner of Washington and First, and they're going to have the project going through Washington, if I'm not mistaken. Does that mean that I'm going to see another one of these? No. Okay, those were my two questions.
Wait, wait, wait. Public hearing is still open. Public hearing is still open. For the third and final time, the public hearing is still open. Law says we got to do it three times. I know there's nobody else but you guys in the room, so. All right, public hearing is now declared closed. Director?
I just wanted to clarify one more thing. Up until a couple of years ago, if you had a sewer lateral that was clay, or a water lateral that wasn't in a manhole, we assessed for those two, because we considered them non-standard, and they likely predated the water utility and the sewer utility. We don't do that anymore, because we need to dig through them to get through anyway. It's going to be harder to work around them than not. But on new infrastructure, so if you didn't have a sanitary lateral, well, there wouldn't have been a home there. But anything new is what we assess for now, and that's why it really comes down to just storm laterals now, because there's a lot of places that don't have those. And in a project like this, we try to make it the whole project. You know, if you get far east on the east side of town where water's 30 feet down, this isn't going to happen, right? But anywhere where there can be an issue that we're going to say, hey, you got to do something about that, we, we want to get there ahead of time so it doesn't cost you four times as much if the problem comes up.
Thank you very much. All right, so the public hearing is closed, and now we will move on to item number 20, which is the final resolution for that project 21 dash 01. Motion to approve by Johnson.
Second.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion.
I just wanted to clarify, wasn't this the area that also had the problems that flooded, and we had the manhole fountain in the middle?
The area that they're talking about here was further south of that, but some of this project, the further north stuff, Forest, Fifth Avenue, that helped with the storm drains, because they were undersized. So when we had a rush of heavy rains, it would overwhelm the system, and we would get some flooding, because it couldn't handle the capacity. It would eventually drain, but you know, you're pushing 10 inches of water through a five-inch pipe, that doesn't work real well. All right?
Thank you.
If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 21 is an ordinance amendment to 24.03, the downtown openetoscan exception.
So moved.
Moved by Christiansen, seconded by Johnson. You were a little bit slow, but you're up. Discussion. Hearing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissant.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. On page 109, item number 22 is a request to hold a street closing, an event for Santa and reindeer on December 10th, 2022. This event did happen last year. And on December 10th, there will be live reindeer. We couldn't get all eight, but we will have live reindeer on the square, and this is the Downtown Point Alliance that is putting this on. And they are looking to close that area off. They'll need a couple parking spots and so forth.
So moved.
Motion by Christiansen, seconded. We'll give the second to Zerozua.
I'm getting out of the way.
Discussion. Okay, if you are in favor of the event, Santa and the reindeer, on December 10th, 2022, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you may leave now. Just vote no. Clerk, please call a roll.
Morrow. Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
No grinch here. Aye.
There you go.
Plousans.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
I can't see anybody voting against Santa and reindeer.
It was a great event last year.
Voting against birthdays or something. No, it should be a fun event, and they've got a little stuffed reindeer that they'll have for the kids to take home, is kind of commemorating their experience, it's a lot of fun. All right, item number 23. They left. Item number 23 is a public hearing of the city budget for 2023. I now declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to offer testimony on the proposed budget for 2023, let us know, and we will take that testimony. We have someone stand up.
Chiefs? Director?
Public hearing is still open.
This is your, you know, your chair.
We do.
He likes to wait till the third round.
He does.
And the public, the public hearing is open for the third time. Nope, all right, seeing no one wishing to speak yet again on the public hearing opportunities for the entire 2023 budget for the City of Stevens Point, I will now, once again, declare the public hearing closed with no comments from the public, and bring it back to the next item, which is item number 24, and that's a resolution adopting the budget, both capital and operating for the City of Stevens Point for the year 2023. Moved by Shore, seconded by Johnson. Discussion? We've all talked about it.
Yeah, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the work that went into getting the bump up on, on the wages for staff, but I'm assuming that you don't have a money-making machine in the basement, so I'm assuming that there were some cuts somewhere, and I guess I'm trying to get a little bit of an idea if the department directors would want to share where they were, where they used the scalpel to try and...
Yes, I thought they were in the finance packet when we asked that, but we had several departments cut about $5,000 out of their budget. The one I remember is Dan's, and that is going to be removing or not watering the medians, in some cases.
I just thought it would be, because I know people, even though no one's here, I'm surprised, there are a great many people who watch this afterwards, so I thought it might be good just to have the directors talk about the work that they did, so that it's just out there for the viewers.
Yeah, we don't have all the directors here.
No, no, but if...
We'll go ahead and...
You got the fire chief.
We'll do a round robin.
Yeah.
And I appreciate, Brian, why don't you talk to yours first, as long as you're here?
Sure. Essentially, we did some cuts in our continuing education, and some of our general office supplies, but CE was probably our biggest cut, and is substantial in a department like mine that doesn't have a very large budget in the first place. But these are things that, instead of, where we typically have CE credits for, like, our building inspectors and our assessors, you know, we, essentially, in 2023, we're just going to say, you know, what you have to take in order to maintain your credentials, the city will cover anything above and beyond that, you know, on a card, essentially, you'd have to cover out of your own pocket. So that was a pretty substantial change to our budget for 2023.
Thank you. And I'm going to reiterate that none of the required training is going to be cut. These are elective and optional training opportunities, should they come up, and if it's something important, of course, we'll, we'll figure out where to spend it. Chief?
So, in the, the $5,000 that was asked to be cut, we took it out of general seminars and educational expenses, and then we also took it out of software and licensing fees, is where we took our two biggest cuts.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a question about that. Aren't those needed for you to maintain the software that you have? Because I know in my wife's job, if you don't do the updates, then it kind of voids the programming. Is that something that you, is that not an issue?
No, it's always an issue that, that we need to maintain and upgrade our software and licensing fees, but when asked to cut, when we looked at where we could actually make the cuts, that, that's where we elected to, to move forward with that, hoping to be able to use some of our capital expenses to offset our operational budget.
Chief Cusso?
We also had to come up with $5,000. What we did is, we organized our, reorganized our crossing guards, we're in a very hard time filling those positions. So we took it out of that budget, we have a full-time CSO, and we'll be supplementing a couple of those crossing guards until we can get them hired with sworn officers and our community service officer.
Thank you, Chief.
A majority of our cut was taken out of the street median irrigation, starting by Lendujust Motors, heading down past Iverson Park, and then going up Hoover Avenue. We have had cuts like this in the past, as you know, the last time we had cuts that hit the department hard, we actually stopped irrigating neighborhood parks. So this has been an area we've looked at, obviously, it saves some water, too, but this, this cut for this budget eliminated seven meters, essentially. So, in order to make that cut, it's at least a 12-month disconnect to not be backbuild, so that's how we're set up. With that said, we have blown them out and taken care of it, so if we ever choose to put that funding back in, they can be turned back on and irrigated again.
Thank you, Director.
And I'm just looking for the other ones.
Joel?
No, Joel is an enterprise, so that didn't happen. It will affect you, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Give me just a minute here. And Director Badun?
Yes, I'm here.
He is here?
Yeah.
I am here.
Oh, there he is. Scott?
I'm here.
Go ahead.
Yes, yeah, we made a couple of minor cuts, maybe some, compared to some of the other departments, we might have a few more accounts that we can otherwise take a little bit from, so maybe it doesn't hit us specifically in each item compared to some, but we took some of the money out of parts and supplies. Lately, we've been running fairly well within that line item, however, that's one of them, of course, we don't really control, when things break down, we have to fix them, but we'll see how that goes for the year. The other one, we took about, a little over half of it out of general construction, which is something we have a little more control of, it just depends how much work we should be able to accomplish in the year, but over the two of them are $5,000 or $5,100, we're taking out of those two accounts.
Thank you, Director.
And those are the only departments that we made the cuts in? I can tell you that none of them were easy, but it was a directive that we thought was important, after Alder Person Christensen asked us to sharpen those pencils again, we went back and sharpened the pencils, and got rid of three of the pencils that we don't use, so we cut the budget there. No, kidding. But it's important, and I think every single department head understands that, you know, those line items won't mean diddly squat if you don't have people to run them. So, that, that's ultimately what it came down to, and all the department heads took a little piece of it, so we appreciate that. Trevor, I thought I saw a hand waving earlier. Oh, JB?
Chief.
One more thing about the budget, and I, I think it's important to discuss, not that it's, it's going to affect a 3% increase on the non-represented members of our department or within the city, and where we had to come up with that additional funding, but I know Chief Cusso and myself and the other represented members within the city, this year with the locals contract that we just settled, we did have to come up with, so everyone is aware, an additional $42,000 out of the EMS budget this year to subsidize our represented employees as well. So besides the $5,000 and the $42,000 out of the EMS budget, there, there was quite a undertaking to the department's fire and EMS budgets operationally moving into 2023, so...
And would you, I think for the audience, explain the difference between the represented and the non-represented? I mean, I know what you're talking about, as it relates to union, some members of the public.
Sure, as, as, as represented employees, they would be represented by a local or under contract, and those are individuals that we would bargain with, and then the non-represented are, are members who fall under the city pay plan.
Thank you, I just thought it was important for people to know.
Not a problem.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All righty. Any other comments? If you are in favor, vote yes, if you are opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plousans.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 25 is on page 119 of your packet, there is an amended resolution that was sent out by the clerk through the comptroller treasurer, talking about the, the slight change in the levy rate. Did everybody get that? Everybody's got it, good. Then we will move on to a resolution appropriating the necessary funds for the City of Stevens Point for 2023, and levying the tax rate for the year 2022. Alder Shore?
I move that we appropriate the necessary funds and levy the tax rate.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion?
If I may.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. Said many times that we depend on our colleagues in the departments and citywide offices to help us fine-tune the budget. Just want to highlight, as a compliment to that, what I see as our main job, or one of our main jobs, which is to grow the tax base. Just kind of, as a piece of all of this discussion about budget and resources, just highlighting that, that this council focuses a lot on trying to, to grow the property tax base in the community, to support all of this.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Plousans.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerozua.
Aye.